I'd like to call the Madison Public School Board of Education meeting to order. Please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, we begin tonight with public participation. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak? Hearing none. Superintendent's report.
Okay, well, it's crunch time. We're getting back here tomorrow. District opens tomorrow when we give an update on the district reconfiguration plan along the way. School opening update, which everyone knows we're back live next Tuesday, and that'll be in my report. So as far as the reconfiguration part, we had six administrative retreat days this summer. I'm looking to go just to fill in the gaps when I miss anything here. Five of them were largely spent on this work. At the outset, we spent a good deal trying to develop a basis for how we're going to approach it from a culture perspective, because that's one of our concerns is really the impact of the culture of this transition and contracting the system. So did some professional readings. One of the books I've been wrote is called The Culture Code. I'm repeating myself, forgive me. I don't know if I reported this last meeting. A great read and, you know, real good way to kind of entry into the conversation about how we get a transition to the culture. Did some work there as a team. We try to frame our work a lot around questions. So one of the questions that we asked ourselves was how do we keep a wavering focus on our vision, our instructional agenda, while seamlessly transition the district? So it's going to be important to try to balance the two, and it's a concern that we, you know, don't want to go backwards in some of the work that we've accomplished and the programs we have in place, but also keeping in mind that transitioning off of, you know, 3,000 students, although not all of them, a good chunk of them, and a lot of staff members and buildings and so forth, the emotions that go along with that. So two big tasks I want to report on tonight. Excuse me. The first one's on the transition plan, and the transition plan itself, in our chart that we presented to the board a number of times, is for students, for staff, for parents. So a couple of things there that we were able to clarify, and I can hand out a copy to the board here. This is, it's kind of a working document, so you've got some little side notes on here as well, but just to get a picture of what we're doing. We came up with two pieces for transitioning. This transition is going to be key. You only get one chance to do it right and do it well. So we came up with a core element plan for transitioning. So what will happen for all kids, for all teachers, for all parents' families at each school, kind of the core transition elements, and then school specific, which we don't have yet. So the transition for Island is going to look a lot different than the transition for Jeffrey and the transition for Ryerson when it comes to parents, students, staff, and so forth, even Brown and Pulson. So the only school really fairly immune, and there are some staffing implications, but aside from that is hand. So the core elements, I've had this document out, you can at your own leisure take a look at it. What are we doing for students, parents, and staff along the way? It's front to back. And this we feel is a good start for us. It said, these are notes, this is kind of a working document I typically hand out or work, thank you, a working document, but it's, it can give you an idea of the work we had in this room in our retreats, our think tank, a lot of chart paper, a lot of stickies, a lot of planning along the way, a lot of things to consider. I'll work through a little bit here for students. Obviously, we have, you know, visiting schedules, we want to talk about orientations, we want to talk about district-wide evening events, we want to get kids to, you know, feel comfortable in transitions, those who are transitioning. And there's a very unique difference between the transition of students at the three elementary schools. Island Avenue, we suspect, it's unofficial, we suspect Island Avenue will go by itself to Jeffrey School. So Seth and I have been to school and playing on the playground at Island Avenue. Chances are we'll travel together to Island. There is a segment of Jeffrey that will be transitioned to Ryerson. And then Ryerson has the welcoming in. So all three schools have a little bit of a different sense of what's happening. There's change at one school, there's some loss at another, there's growth at one school. So try to be mindful of that along the way. Placing students, hand placing students, obviously, all the balancing is best that we can do, which we do fairly typically. Creating some new traditions and celebrations, looking at some field trips, maybe try to coordinate if it's possible, so multiple schools can do a field trip together, as opposed to, we're very careful to not do that right now, so maybe we could do some crossing over. This is all in the idea stage that we're working towards. From a parent perspective, obviously, I've communicated out over the summer with the district reconfiguration tab on the website, and there'll be a lot more forthcoming. Some work with the PTOs, you know, we're sunsetting a PTO, so we want to make sure they're a real entity, but they do look to us for some guidance and, you know, what kind of roles can they play in the cultural side? Communicating the transition timelines, the touring, the visitations with parents, who to appoint people for questions, putting as much on the website as we can. Those parent nights are going to be critical, frequently asked questions. If you turn over from a faculty perspective, we have each of our principals at the K-6 level, we're going to sit one-to-one with each teacher, each certified staff member, and just ask some questions about their strengths and their needs when it comes to transitioning. We'll do that by October. Assignments, after the assignments are out, we want to make sure that we have a welcoming and a nice smooth transition for the staff at the K-8 level this spring. Should be, have team building activities planned for staff members to kind of get together. We're going to have, those two days that were already, the board already approved to be in the calendar at the end of this school year in June to really begin that physical transition. And we made a commitment, cardboard boxes and moving materials are not to be in the schools as far as packing and kids see packed boxes in the schools, we want to avoid that at all costs. We know, it's obvious that kids will be having conversations at home, but there should be nothing in the schools that should indicate that. We do have a question about the school calendar for next year, which Gail will approach in due time, very shortly, I'm assuming. Do we want to look at those PD days in August in a different way? We have plans with Bill McMinn as far as transitioning. I've already been through this at the building level and we'll continue with that, that's well underway. Tech department has needs, we have PD initiatives that we're going to, you know, really be carefully looking at for 1920. Obviously, it's different for the high school. And for teachers to note, there's always an open door policy, very clearly communicating. For example, I tend to send a message to the Island faculty by themselves before it goes out to the community, if it involves Island Avenue School, little things like that, just to make sure that folks feel cared for and plugged in. And then non-certified staff will have talks about reassigning in the spring. So a lot of this is underway, planning still coming. I'll keep updating the board on these steps as far as transition. That's the first big task. Any questions, Frank, on the second one? So the second one has to do with staffing models, and this is a real big one. So before we even considered programming, before we even considered where folks might move positions, that even means positions, we had to come up with a criteria, you know, what are we standing by, what are we standing behind? So our working document came up with three elements that kind of guided every decision, and it had to have an honoring of, are we still living the district vision? I mean, that was the commitment we made, the board adopted vision. Are we honoring the fact that we're declining enrollment, and this is about inefficiency? And are we honoring the value of balance and equity in schools? So making sure that there's programming that's equitable across the schools. So it's always mindful when you have sibling schools, three elementaries, two elementaries. So those are three key things. And then we came up with four concepts with some questions around the two, and I'll be prepared to share this more with the board in the next meeting. And those four areas are core programming. We have to answer questions around core programming. We're talking about staffing. What is this doing for our core curriculum or our core program? Student supports. What elements are necessary for student supports on the whole spectrum? The whole child development, how does a position or a program support whole child development? And then there's the systems piece. What elements are supporting continuous improvement in the system? So we took this criteria, we went through kind of a deductive process, and we arrived at this, again, chart paper, stickies, all that, kind of used this as a guide, a filter. And then we looked at three broad areas where our staffing models kind of all fit. So we did it just because we had about 12 people, we broke up into three groups of four. So in one area, we had our special ed teachers, which included all of our emotional, social support services counselors, school psychologists, social workers. We have our school psychologists, SS, social workers, guidance counselors, MAS, Youth and Family Service supports, ESS supports, there are five different social emotional clinicians at some level here. We looked at OT and PT, speech and language, our interventionists, our nursing, our special ed coordinators. So all those positions that fall in that big bucket around student support services. We also then took another bucket, which was kind of other supports, but more the regular ed area and so forth around our instructional technology coaches, our instructional coaches in math and language arts, our technology support staff, our team leaders, department heads, program coordinators, our secretaries, administrative assistants, so kind of more of all of our regular ed supports, all those folks. And then we have a last group that looked at the general ed teachers, largely driven by enrollment. We looked at our enrichment specialists, we looked at our paraprofessionals, we looked at the administrators, the leadership team, we looked at art and world language and related arts and music and P and theater. So the three teams broke off, we used that filter, that criteria. We have research to do still, we have homework to do still, we're arriving at some, you know, recommendations, but I think the big takeaway for the board is that we're analyzing the functions and we're analyzing the purposes of these roles and the programs as best we can, and we'll do the same thorough examination that you've seen us do when it came to the Brown instructional model and other examples in the past. We believe we'll put forth a very reasonable recommendation. Any part of it can be debated, I mean, there's no question. So we'll do the best we can to come up with that, certainly in anticipation of the next couple of months with budget season and so forth. So that's a lot of information, but we did a lot over the summer. Go a lot deeper if you have further questions. Gail, before we turn it over, did I miss any pieces that maybe you want to fill in the gaps on?
No, except for, we do continue to look at instrumentals. Had a meeting during the summer with a teacher who had a concept that she ran by the Brown administrators, Tom and myself. And then also worked with the Brown administrators to come up with another option as well. And this week, I'm meeting with the instrumental teachers on one of the PD days, and we're working through a couple of components of what we're going to.
I just want to ask for some patience on the working documents. We're going to clean these up for the next board meeting. We just finished our last meeting on Monday, so these were all kind of fresh and, you know, I think we may still have some things behind the screen. On the board, there may be stuff hanging.
I see something.
Yeah, there is still stuff there. We didn't get the whole room. We had 20 new teachers in here today. So I'm not going to say we, I will say Gail and her team did their best to get the room ready for 20 new teachers. But if I may, Gail was instrumental in planning a lot of this this summer. You've seen the tools that we use, you've seen them in action sometimes. It's some of the most favorite work I have is around the tools that we use to kind of come and arrive at decisions. So I think it's good work, it's going in the right direction. Any questions or comments or thoughts?
I hope Gail has documented those.
I know, I hope I did too.
Well, there's a lot of one, the supplies come in, so they all came in. But you know what? One of the ones you got, they don't stick that well. They sort of fall, and you want to watch administrators freak, oh, hey, you stick in here, down and around.
I have a low-quality product, I couldn't believe it.
Yeah, I know.
Ask me the author.
I'll post it.
I know, I think I have a.
I actually took some, you know what? I took some pictures. I'll forward in my next board memo, I'll forward some of those pictures.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great.
To see some of the work. Yeah, I just thought that, I took some pictures in the wall before they got turned down.
I posted some chart paper.
Okay, so that's, that's that for reconfiguration. That is an ongoing task. School opening, we're fully staffed, everyone's here, gang's all here. Tomorrow, we'll have about 303 certified teachers, and then another 100 or 200 or so, whatever it is, custodians, secretaries, nurses, paraprofessionals, everybody else for complication at hand. Kickoff at 8:00 to 8:30 for breakfast, and then we have a program recognizing a bunch of folks, have a keynote speaker, who are very excited about, Dr. Horrell Williams, who used to be with Tom at Fairfield U. He's now the dean of arts and sciences at St. Thomas University in Minnesota. Powerful speaker, looking forward to his comments. We have PD this week, we've got three days of a lot of work going on around the district. I think we dodged a bullet with the heat, because a lot of districts started already, and they're, I had, I loved it. I was in a thread of superintendent emails to them, and they were all in panic mode about early dismissing and calling in advance, and I thought, well, we'll be here on Tuesday, see how the weather is then. So, and I have, I mean, I will, I have pushed for some times to start before Labor Day, and you know what? We dodged a bullet this year, definitely. Bus routes, I know Art actually rode some today.
Took a ride on a hot bus.
Yeah, we did.
We visit more stops than you would know.
Yes, yes. There's a little shred of panic, because there's some paving going on around town that's starting next week, perfect timing. And Johnny Iannaco, who I saw a camaraderie today, I gave an earful to, on the town side, who runs that, assured us that they will work around the buses. So hand athletics is up and running. You know, if you're a hand athlete in the fall, you start at hand before school started, and it's a wonderful way. The band, have band camp, if you're in the band, you start at hand before the school year started. So kids are feeling good, you know, they're ready to go, the freshmen. Elementary, middle school orientations are this week, I know, so we have a lot going on. We're back, we're back. So that's the school opening update. Anything else from the board?
No.
I'm good.
Okay. Moving on to board member comments. So I just wanted to just remind everybody the retreat is scheduled for September 8th to be facilitated by Tom Mooney, and the surveys have all been sent to you. If you haven't received them, let me know. They go directly back to CAE, and they will do what they do to make it digestible for the retreat. And then also back to school nights are coming up, so similar to how we did in the fall, we're going to look for volunteers to represent the board at those transition time. That's all I had. And so now we have, sorry, can't see. These are reports and updates and committee reports. So planning committee, we have not met since the last meeting. Personnel committee.
So negotiations with the teamsters are ongoing, and as an update, the parties have agreed to enlist the free services of the state mediator as the negotiations continue.
Okay, so the policy committee is bringing several policies to the board tonight for third and final readings. You'll see in your packets the policies with any revisions marked. We will vote on them later, but I'll just go through and give brief summaries of each policy that we're voting on now, so we all know, they all should be fairly familiar at this point. But to review, policy number 3150 is medical reimbursement for special education students. This policy requires modification to reflect recent legislative changes. It's been reviewed by Dr. Vitalea. The policy is also cross-referenced in the health and medical records policy, which is policy number 5125.1. This is a new mandatory policy, it's a duplicate of CAE's existing one. It requires that the district comply with HIPPA and FERPA when applicable to maintain the privacy of protected health information. Policy number 6161.3 is comparability of services. These are revisions from mandatory policy that ensures equity and comparability of services among schools. This policy was last updated in 2001. The proposed revisions include reporting and documentation requirements, as well as specific exceptions to comparability of requirements. Policy number 6090.10, individualized education program, special education program. This is a new and mandated policy, is a duplicate of CAE's revised IEP special education program policy. Following a 2017 Supreme Court ruling which interpreted the scope of the free appropriate public education requirements in the Individuals with Disabilities Act, Dr. Vitalea has suggested that we not keep any part of our existing 20-year-old policy, but rather adopt CAE's new IEP and special education program policy that reflects the court's unanimous ruling. In particular, the court stated that a school must offer an IEP that is, quote, "reasonably calculated to enable the child to make progress appropriate in light of the child's circumstances." Policy number 5144.4, physical exercise and discipline of students. This is a mandatory policy, which we do not currently have in place. It is based on 2013 legislation that required boards of education to adopt such policies. This policy, with very few exceptions, states that school employees may not prevent an elementary school student from participating in recess or in other sustained opportunities for physical activity as a form of discipline. In addition, school employees may not require students in grades K to 12 to engage in physical activity as a form of disciplinary in the school day. Policy number 6162.51 is survey of students and student privacy. This is a mandatory policy, which we do not currently have in place. It concerns the types of notifications the school must provide to parents, guardians, and students prior to the use of federal Department of Education funded surveys, analyses, or evaluations, other surveys, and invasive physical examinations, as well as conditions that would require board approval of surveys and prior parental consent. And bylaw 9450, board committees. Bylaw 9450 was adopted in 1973 and last revised 13 years ago. One of the policy committee's charges is to review bylaws on an annual basis. This policy revision in front of you tonight includes three changes. To amend, expand, and retitle the charge of the planning committee to the curriculum and student development committee. To establish a new communications committee. To maintain the ad hoc nature of facilities committee, but to list it as an ad hoc committee and outline its charges in the bylaws. And to establish a process for tasks not regularly assigned to a particular committee to be assigned by the chair. You will see in your packet, in particular bylaw 9450, we're just reviewing that in policy committee, and there was one change that we agreed to last week, which did not make it into this version, because there's been so many. But I'll draw your attention to line 60 in your packet. We discussed this last week and approved it, but it didn't make it into this version, I apologize. Line 60, we'll read, "Receive regular updates and projections regarding enrollment." I'm sorry that didn't make it into this version, but we did discuss that last week and approve And there are no further changes to any of those policies tonight from what's in your packets. If you have, we have comments, do you want us to do it now or as each one comes up? Doesn't really matter to me what's the typical process.
Usually discussion is during the voting, but I'm fine to open up right now.
I'm not waiting. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't want to miss opportunity.
Sure. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So I thought the arrangement or the agreement was through the policy committee that any new agenda item go through an executive committee, not chairperson? Did I misunderstand that?
We discussed that, but we decided to keep it as it is with the chair because of consistency with language in the bylaws, but.
Who decided that? Because we came up.
We discussed that last week in our committee meeting, and we talked about the special workshop too, but we.
It's at the discretion of the chair. I can tell you this chair will be using the executive committee. That helps.
There was not a consensus to make that change from what my understanding was, but that we can discuss it, it was a matter of keeping it consistent with all the other bylaws. That is something that the policy committee will be spending more time on, is some of those streamlining things. Any other questions? Okay, so moving on to planning. We have not met. Wendy, something? How are you doing? What's up? Facilities.
We also have not met since the last meeting.
Audience response to the information board. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. None in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So motion to approve the minutes of the August 14, 2018 Board of Education meeting. So moved. Second. Thank you, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
Got that, Wendy? Motion to approve bylaw 9450, board committees.
So moved.
Right. Second?
Doesn't require a second.
Oh, because it came out of committee.
I have prepared a written statement about the policy vote on bylaw 9450 this evening, as I'd like my words to be included in the minutes, and this board no longer includes comments in the minutes unless a statement is submitted, despite multiple requests from board members to do so. I'm going to vote no on this policy change for several reasons. I have no issue with the communications committee, although I don't feel it is necessary. As in my opinion, the superintendent currently serves this function perfectly well. The facilities committee has been discussed about as much as it can be, so I have no wish to revisit that issue. I'm just glad that my colleagues decided to honor their own votes from a few months ago. The reason for my no vote is that this policy is based on arbitrary changes to the purview of the planning committee. As one of our members said, this is a solution without a problem, and it is being done not for the sake of providing better direction or input on issues related to our children and staff, but in my opinion, to serve the personal desires and political leanings of specific work members. These members do not appear to trust the decisions of the current planning committee and have tried to block this committee from providing input to the district. Through this change, they will limit the scope and role of the committee. The majority of the items being removed from the current planning committee will go to the policy and facilities committees. Anyone who looks at the membership of these committees can clearly see that these policies and facilities committee board members are the same board members who are advocating most strongly for this change. Additionally, for the community who may not know how the board works, the board chair is a de facto member of each committee, but does not have a vote during the committee process. The board chair has expressed several times throughout this process that items should not be discussed in the planning committee, but rather go through the executive committee or to the full board. In both of those instances, the board chair will have more control over who and what gets to be heard. Lastly, I'm really concerned about how partisan this bylaw change is. Politics should not factor into the decision-making of any board of education. Throughout this policy process, comments have been evenly split, for and against this change. I cannot understand why the four voices in favor of this change were given far more credence, while the comments and suggestions of the four who were against the change were not incorporated, as evidenced in the redline version of changes to planning. Collaboration does not mean letting the other point of view speak and then ignoring all their suggestions. It does not mean gathering and incorporating input on the changes from just your own party before sharing with the rest of the board, or withholding draft revisions until the last minute that the agenda is released. I am unclear why all of our opinions do not matter equally, and it is unfortunate that the opinions that matter less all fall on the right side of the aisle. The passing of this bylaw change will result in seven standing committees, with it being left to the discretion of the board chair to determine who works on many issues that don't fit neatly into a bucket. It is unclear how the communications committee will be staffed, but of the six current committees, this board chair has already determined that four of them are Democrat majority, leaving only finance and a newly dismantled and limited planning committee. This is a very clear signal that this board does not value equal diversity of thought and opinion, and it is disappointing that our colleagues think so.
I just would like to comment on a few of the things that were said in there. I didn't change any board committees when I took over being chair. Those were established.
You appointed facilities.
Right.
Right.
We all did. That was unanimous vote, that we all compromised in a bipartisan way.
You appointed the people.
I, right, well, the committee that we came up with identified the people that should be, somebody from finance, somebody from planning, and, and a chair.
Who from planning is on?
Galen. Galen, no, sorry, it had to be somebody CIP. Sorry, it had to be somebody from CIP, not finance. So.
No.
I mean, and that was a group decision, you guys, so.
The fact remains.
Okay, the fact does remain, the fact also remains, and I'm sorry, but this idea of partisanship is really, it's really unfortunate that that is coming up. This was a proposal by a board member for a policy that hasn't been revised in 13 years, when our charge as a board is to address policy every year. It's been 13 years since this is done. A board member saw. A Board member saw that there was a missing link, saw that there was a committee that, to the person that identified this change, didn't, wasn't in line with best practice.
I think the facts differ.
Can I? Well, you do. I appreciate that, and I think you're entitled to thinking that. It doesn't make it reality. So, that's... Yes, sorry. Okay. I do not think it is a secret that I am not in support of the bylaw ninety-four fifty changes that we are voting on tonight. Along the way, I've repeatedly asked, why are we making the changes? Was something not working? Was something broken? I thought these were interesting and important questions to pose, as the person who drafted the changes and submitted them to policy has only been on this Board for a few months. The only straightforward answer I keep getting is about aligning with other schools in our Dirk. I have never seen us follow others before. Typically, we are the leaders and set the standard, and that is part of what I love so much about our district, striving to be the best, even if it's not what everyone else is doing. A few months back, after a long debate, I voted to split Planning into Facilities and Planning as a gesture of goodwill and compromise towards my fellow Board members, despite the fact that the Planning Committee had been able to handle Facilities oversight with no issues for many years. The timing of this is also somewhat suspect as well, as a policy change was introduced within days after a period of repeatedly denied requests from the Planning Committee for information from the administration. This, to me, feels like a power or control move, as no one else can give any other explanation, despite my asking many times why this is necessary. I hope that people on the Board remember, when they vote tonight, that the people in these seats will change, and that altering things for the right now is very short-sighted. Although I will be voting no tonight, as I don't think any of these changes are needed or necessary, I am looking forward to leaving this discussion behind, so we can focus on the actual work of the district and stop revising votes and bylaws. Moving responsibility from one committee to another does materially nothing to help our kids, which is what I feel this Board of Volunteers should be spending our time on. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry.
As a matter of perspective, from somebody who's been on this Board for over a decade now, I'd like to point out that on many occasions, from any political quarter or either side of the aisle, there have been suggestions, requests, ruminations, discussions about potentially changing the structure of our committees. In particular, the big, you know, the eight-hundred-pound gorilla in the room has been the fact that our Planning Committee is a juggernaut. We have classically had tremendous difficulty getting anybody to serve and volunteer and step up to be Planning Chair. It's always required arm twisting. You yourself, Jessica, had to be, like, really begged to do... I understand you enjoy it now, and that's weird.
I was never begged. I took Cindy's spot when she left, and I did it with honor, so I wasn't...
You did it with honor, absolutely. I agree with you, and I thank you for that.
I never pushed back.
But I recall discussions that, it was intense while, while we were trying to figure out if we could find anybody to replace Cindy.
It's just not true.
I specifically remember that. Okay? So even if that's not true, I remember going back to Kathy Rosini, not wanting to serve, and her arm being twisted, and that was back when Academy School was first closed. Okay? So that's how many years ago? Bruce, you should know the answer to that. How many years ago did the Academy close?
Fourteen.
So fourteen years ago, we had discussions about whether Planning Committee should be, should continue as the juggernaut that it is with all kinds of, like, generic catch-all duties. The fact is that while we do pride ourselves on being different, difference only makes a difference if the difference you're pursuing has positive benefit. Sometimes, it's much more wise to take a look around, take stock, and say, there's a reason for the tried and the true. There's a reason why everybody else is doing it a different way. And the majority of districts in our state operate with a Facilities Committee, a Communications Committee, a separate Curriculum Committee. Most of them do not have any... We may be the only one in the state that has a committee that's called Planning Committee. The, what this set of policies seeks to do is to realign the Madison Board with the more typical organizational structure that is found throughout our state. And, you know, I think it would serve us well. I am very resentful of the fact that this is being attacked as a partisan move. It is not. An idea must have its inception somewhere, and if we're going to devolve as a Board to the point where any time a Democrat comes up with an idea that the Republicans are going to oppose it, and every time a Republican comes up with an idea, the Democrats are going to oppose it, we're not going to get anything accomplished for our kids. I think, you know, I'm looking forward to this retreat that we have coming up, because we really need to look ourselves in the mirror and make some real progress on, you know, recognizing each other as individuals and recognizing each other's ideas and not attacking everyone out of the gate, just because there's been, you know, a shift in the leadership of the Board. I'm voting for this. I think it's eminently wise. I think it's well thought out. We've had plenty procedural time over the last four, four-and-a-half months to work on this. No, it's been longer than that, and it was delayed, and we had an extra, we had an extra...
June twenty-fifth.
Okay, three months.
We went...
Emily, as the Chair of the Policy Committee, expressed concern that other people were expressing concern about it and didn't feel like they had enough of a say, so she arranged a whole additional meeting for us to meet on it and discuss it.
And incorporate in...
And we incorporate all of the changes. All of the changes were based on...
Finance is not temporary, or Facilities is not temporary.
Hang on, hang on. All of the changes were based on issues that were brought up through our Board discussions. And I, quite frankly, am not very happy with a major feature of this, which is, you know, we're not going to make the Facilities Committee permanent in nature with this change.
You had already agreed.
And, yeah, well, we agreed to it, and I'm going to go along with that, because it's a give and a take, all right? And that's giving up something substantial. So, I'm voting for this. I think it's great policy for the Board. You know, we need to try something new, because I don't think things are working the way that they are. Thank you.
Can I just say, there's been a couple of theme comments made that I just would like to address. The word "power" has come up a lot. The Board as an individual or as a party has no more power. We are a group of nine. Consensus is consensus, and we are building consensus. There were meetings since June twenty-fifth to address this. The policy revision bylaw was followed to the letter to address this, so... And there were meetings added to give people more time. There were conversations that were had. There were meetings in town. There were, there was a ton of opportunity for people to provide feedback and have them amended. And I know you disagree, because the one thing that you would like, which is Planning to stay the same, wasn't changed. But that is because the consensus of the group didn't agree...
Four and four.
With moving on. I just would like to finish. The other thing is, I've heard over and over again that Greg didn't have the opportunity or shouldn't have had the opportunity to propose this, because he was only on the Board for four months, three months. There is no hierarchy on this Board. We are all equal. We are a body, and we are here to govern. And this is a major charge of any Board of Ed, is to look at policy and create policy. That is what this, what happened. I respect the fact that you disagree with it, but to indicate that it was anything other than followed according to our bylaws isn't fair. It's not, it's just not fair.
I would just like to clarify that I was on the Planning Committee when Cindy Wood resigned, and I took over without any arm twisting. At that time, I was also serving on the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee, and I was a CIP rep.
But you're on one committee right now.
Thank you.
Because Planning is, you have said, is a lot of work.
I am a member of the Policy Committee, and I did convey some of the information that was shared here, and I missed one of the committee meetings. Thank you for rearranging. However, I do feel that some of the opinions that I expressed and some of the concerns that I expressed are not indicated in these changes. So one of the concerns, specific concern that I conveyed to the team, is that when an issue comes up, I don't necessarily think it should be, as you had said, we are Board of Ed members. It shouldn't go to one person. It should go to an Executive Committee, or go to where it had been before, because it seemed to be working. That's from the eyes of someone that's been on this Board of Ed for several months. Didn't seem broken to me. So I did convey that. It's not indicated in here. The last, the last message I just received is that it's going to go through the Chairperson. I'm a little concerned about that. The other area that I mentioned, and I think it's fair, and I respect both of your opinions as seasoned members, one of the concerns that I had was with altering the roles and responsibilities, and even the title of Planning. I, again, understand the concern. As a new person, I don't feel like if it's broken, we need to make these significant shifts. So I did convey that message, so that you know that it was shared.
I just, the questions come up from three different...
Seth, I'm sorry, I didn't try.
Sorry, go ahead.
Can, I would like to follow what the best practice is. If there's anybody who hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet that would before anybody speaks a second time, is there any?
I might have something, but Seth, can you go?
Okay.
I just wanted to address the direct questions that were asked by three people, which was, you know, why do we need to change this, and why is it broken, or how can it be fixed by changing it? And the objective responses to that are that with a catch-all duty as a bullet point in the bylaws, the Planning Committee has traditionally ended up exercising controls, control over, over functions that are not properly within even a committee's, let alone the Planning Committee's authority. For example, the Planning Committee would often be, would be the place where discussions would occur about things that are not with, that are either not within the Board's purview, they're in the District's purview, or they're in the Board's purview, but it's required by law, or by custom, or by common sense, or by whatever, by organizational structural needs, to be a committee of the whole requirement and discussion, rather than a committee discussion. And one of the concerns is that, and this is not to benefit the party presently in charge or anything, this is, look, believe me, you know, power is going to shift back and forth, and history shows in this town, it's going to be the other way more than it is this way. And so these changes are not short-sighted interventions to give Katie more control over the Board. They are well-thought-out concepts to improve the way the Board works. And one issue that comes up when you have an overused Planning Committee structure is that the transparency of the Board suffers, because instead of having open dialogue as a committee of the whole on the public record, you have a lot of pre-work done in a, in a committee, regardless of who's in charge of that committee, and they have a lot of power in that instance. And then you have kind of like, well, we're just bringing it out to the vote, for a final vote to the Board. So there are real concerns and reasons for changing the structure, and there are real reasons why CADE, the authorizing statutes for Boards of Ed in Connecticut, and all the institutions maybe other than us in the state have used these tried and true patterns. So those are the, you know, that directly answers the reason. It's not just because of this, or just because of, yeah, I mean, there were some ridiculous, in my opinion, ideas raised as to, you know, trying to, like, want someone's power, or they're trying to be partisan, or whatever. No, these are things that will impact both parties well into the future if they're adopted, and they're going to fall for or against both parties equally over time. So I just, I'm not persuaded by those arguments, and I hope that I was able to answer with some specificity why the system does require change.
So I want to say first to Emily and Seth and Violet, I appreciate your committee accepting the proposal I put forward two months ago on this topic. I want to emphasize that I agree with, I'll paraphrase Tom, and what he usually says, that policy is one of the most important things we can do as a Board. And so the discussion here has been fairly, very valuable over that time, and I think, you know, this is not the proposal I put forward. There have been many amendments to this proposal via conversation that happened starting two months ago and ending about two weeks ago on the fourteenth. I also want to say to that same committee, I appreciate the three of you putting forward the proposal as amended on the fourteenth forward to the Board unanimously, so that we could have this vote here and let people weigh in once again. I think the process has been exemplary. Emily, thank you again, and I hope we can continue to have these conversations about what might be the most important work we give. Thanks.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Sorry. Motion to approve Policy thirty-one fifty, Medical Reimbursement for Special Education Students?
So moved.
It doesn't need a second reading.
Correct.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion to approve Policy fifty-one twenty-five point one, Health and Medical Records?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Action item to approve Policy sixty-ninety point one-zero, IEP slash Special Education Program? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion to approve Policy fifty-one forty-four point four, Physical Exercise and Discipline of Students?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion to approve sixty-one sixty-two point five-one, Survey of Students, Student Privacy?
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion to approve Policy forty-one forty-one, Social Networking?
So moved.
Discussion?
You might want to raise that. We've had the reading.
Oh, is this the one?
That's the one.
So this is a third reading that we are taking action on tonight. It was discussed at the last policy meeting.
The third reading was on August fourteenth.
Discussion? That was the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Motion to approve sixty-one sixty-one point three, Comparability of Services? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Is there any old business? Future gem items?
Before I was elected to this office in November of two thousand and thirteen, I did a lot of homework to make sure that being on this Board was the right decision for me. I have volunteered in one capacity or another since arriving in Madison ten-plus years ago. I attended Board meetings, I spoke with current Board members, staff, past Board members. It was going to be a big commitment, and I wanted to make sure it was the right position for me, and I was the right person. I attended board meetings, I spoke with current board members, staff, past board members. It was going to be a big commitment, and I wanted to make sure it was the right position for me, and I was the right person for the position. For me, the driving factor was the impact I would have on almost 3,000 kids in our community, and in the end, I decided to run. I was very proud to have been elected to the seat to represent the community, and even more proud and honored to serve on a board that was truly nonpartisan and all about kids. When the next decision came on whether to run again in November 2017, it was no-brainer for me. We were deep in the school reconfiguration, and I wanted to see that project through to ensure that we were doing the best and right things for the kids and the community at large. As I approached my fifth-year anniversary on this board, something has changed, and now for the better. Politics have entered the door in a way I never thought possible for a school board, and especially for our community. It is very disappointing to watch how the boards focus on the kids, and employees of our district have shifted now to a constant revisit of things we have already voted on. Attempts to discuss actual work of the district and provide context and input are denied by the administration and blocked by the board chair. We have always agreed to support every vote, no matter the outcome, even if the vote did not go the way you or your party hoped. I have never once in my five years voted because someone in my party called me and tried to sway me to vote that way, and I am proud of that. Since the November 2017 election, in my opinion, this board has accomplished nothing, except revisiting decisions that were already made and fixing systems that aren't broken, in order to stack the impact of committees more politically, budget decisions in the Facilities Committee as two examples, and rewriting our own bylaws to minimize the role of planning. And now to create yet another new committee. For my five years in this volunteer position, the four committees have been able to cover the work of the district successfully and without issue, but now apparently we need six committees to do that same work. That is a lot of committees to ask nine people to cover for a volunteer position. In addition, there seems to be no need to use the Executive Committee for any of our work. This committee has met one time since the election. The chair has not reached out to me for communication or input with any consistency, and in fact, has withheld information activity from my position as Vice Chair. It appears the board is being run as a dictatorship. I disagree with the board operating on a need-to-know basis, which the board chair promotes, and especially as the board chair seems to think we need to know nothing. This cloud of secrecy creates a feeling of mistrust, even if there is nothing to mistrust, and leads me to feel like our board is very broken in its current state. Lastly, none of the tenure and knowledge of my five years on this board seems to be valued by many of the people sitting around this table. It is because of all this, after a lot of thought and consideration, that I have come to not an easy decision, but the right decision for me, that effective tomorrow, August 29, 2018, I will step down from this board. My party will work to find a replacement as soon as possible. I wish you all the best of luck, and I hope that you can work to focus to become the great board you were just a few years ago, where the focus of the board was doing the work of the district rather than rubber-stamping decisions, where you did not always agree, and you did not always vote unanimously, but you did always respect and value people's thoughts and opinions. When something was voted on, no matter how the vote splits, you all got behind the decision and got to work, where party politics were left at the door, and you just did what was best for the district and the community as a whole, and you utilized your Executive Committee so that there was a true balance of power, and where complete information was disseminated to the full board in a timely manner. I will submit my letter of resignation tomorrow and ask that you add an agenda item to accept my letter of resignation at your next board meeting. Thank you.
I'm heartbroken to hear that, and even more heartbroken to see here that you feel that way. I'm going to give you a moment and not stand. I think we need a motion to enter into executive session.
Back it.
I'm going to leave it while you go. Okay. Thank you. Great, so you can be done, because we're at executive.